18, clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Roybal?
Present.
Mr. Shaner?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Laborn?
Here.
Mr. Lura?
Here.
Mayor Orr?
Here.
Dr. Rennie?
Present.
All members are present, mayor.
Great, thank you. If you will, please, what, no, I know. What we're going to start off with first, if you'll indulge me, is a moment of silence. We lost a 13-year employee, Chris Green, who was taken from us much too soon. He had heart issues. I don't even think he lived to the right old age of 43. He was a really beloved member of the Traffic Division. And it was said during his eulogy today that at some point, he apparently commented that no squirrels were harmed during any of the painting and striping work that he had conducted for the city of Cheyenne. So we truly lost a good employee today. So if you'll just join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items that any member wishes to have removed?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Twenty-two Alpha.
Twenty-two A.
Concur.
Concur.
All right. Twenty-two A has been removed from the consent agenda. For those of you following along, this is the City of Cheyenne Annual Employee Performance Evaluation Plan. Any other items? Any other items? All right. All those in favor of, oh, thank you, motion. Do I hear a motion to approve all of the items with the exception of twenty-two A?
Yeah, second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Cook. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is number six, vouchers.
Madam Mayor, I do have a conflict.
Okay.
Any discussion from the public on vouchers? I'd make you wait until he actually left the room. Okay. Any other? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the vouchers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back, Mr. Roybal. Ordinance, second reading, amending section 5.12.020 definitions and section 5.12.030, licenses and permits, types of chapter 5.12 alcoholic liquor and malt beverages of Title V business licenses and regulations of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming pertaining to special malt beverage annual permit.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. Hearing none. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by council?
Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance, second reading, annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, the South Half, East Half, Track One, Skyline Tracks, and that portion of Brimmer Road right of way adjacent to said South Half, East Half of Track One, Laramie County, Wyoming, situated in southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section 18, township 14 north, range 66 west of the 6 PM, county of Laramie, state of Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Story Boulevard and Powderhouse Road.
Thank you. Is there any comment by the public on this? Comment by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Roybal?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Case.
Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance, second reading, pursuant to section 2.2.1 zoning map amendments, section 5.1.2 zoning districts established, and section 5.1.3 official zoning map of the Unified Development Code, changing the zoning classification from county LR low-density residential to LR low-density residential for the South Half, East Half, Track One, Skyline Tracks, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northwest of the intersection of Story Boulevard and Powderhouse Road.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. Mr. Roybal?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Mr. Case?
This is me.
Mr. Johnson?
All right. Discussion by council? Discussion by council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance, second reading, pursuant to sections 1.1.6 and 2.4.1 of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code, UDC, amending section 5.1.5B to increase the size of semi-attached dwelling duplex lots in the MR medium-density residential zone district.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public? Hearing none. Mr. Roybal?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Roybal, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ordinance, first reading, vacating the Ninth Street right-of-way line west of Snyder Avenue between fractional block 523, all of blocks 524 and 573, and fractional block 574, original city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming.
This item is referred to Public Services Committee.
Resolution reappropriating the fiscal year 2019 budget of the city of Cheyenne according to the provisions of Wyoming statute section 16-4-112 and 16-4-113.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. All right. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Johnson.
Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Resolution adopting the recommendations of the Cheyenne Broadband Task Force, which will serve as a catalytic event to facilitate accelerated deployment of ubiquitous, ubiquitous, I hate that word, ubiquitous, thank you Sylvia, whatever Sylvia said.
Delicious.
Affordable high-speed internet access. Sorry, mayor.
Very fine. Thank you. I would be willing to bet that there is public discussion on this item. Please, oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot to say, when you come to the podium, if you could please identify yourself, any organization that you might be representing, that would be great. And if you haven't already, please silence your cell phones.
All right. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Eric Trowbridge, but most people know me plainly by my initials, ET. I am the headmaster and executive director of the Array School located on 1607 Capitol Avenue in downtown Cheyenne, and I am speaking on behalf of Array, Inc. Array is Wyoming's first accelerated technology and design school, taking students through a seven-month workforce training program that teaches web and mobile app development, graphic design, computer science fundamentals from Stanford University, and about three dozen other different technologies and disciplines. The reason I am providing this backstory is that it should be fairly clear how important Cheyenne's internet infrastructure is to our school and its potential future growth here in southeast Wyoming. We're proud to call Cheyenne home and also proud of our accomplishments. We've graduated three classes since 2016, with almost all of them being placed into our growing technology sector here in the state, most of them right here in Cheyenne. The average salary at Array is about $46,500, and our students have used their new careers to purchase homes, start companies, and contribute back to our city. Over the last two years, we have attracted two tech companies either to Wyoming or to downtown Cheyenne. The first is Helix Technologies, who are based out of San Francisco, and opened their administrative office here in downtown Cheyenne last year in the Paramount Building. Over the next few years, it may even begin to transition some of their software developers from the Bay Area to downtown Cheyenne. The other is Inlumen Technologies, which hired one of our graduates from our second class to open their Wyoming office. And Inlumen is based in Reno, Nevada, with offices in San Francisco, Seattle, and Austin, Texas. So you can understand why, then, the mayor called on me in January to chair her broadband task force as part of her State of the City address. I was excited. I was excited to begin work on this incredibly important discussion about moving our community forward and preparing it to grow with the necessary infrastructure. I was excited to work with a small team appointed by the mayor to begin research on how we could build and maintain a competitive broadband market that would benefit every resident, business, and school in Cheyenne. Our directive from the mayor was to explore all options and come up with a plan that outlined what we could do to make this happen. We looked at everything from the municipality broadband options, private-public partnerships, and the private industry solutions. We tried to find other communities with similar makeups to Cheyenne that we could use to study these different approaches. Could they work here? How would they work here? What were these cities doing, and what was the impact to their communities? We looked at Ammon, Idaho, Salt Lake City. We partnered with the city of Lincoln, Nebraska, and a handful of other municipalities. And as you know, it wasn't hard to find them. Clearly, many, many cities, big and small, are all looking for their own answers, too. So instead of spending too much time or money or reinventing the wheel or digging super-deep into data points, we tried to identify common initiatives that these cities were doing to prepare for future technologies like 5G, fiber-to-the-home and business, and different smart city initiatives. And that is exactly what this resolution contains. Six recommendations that we felt were in common with cities who had, are, or will be moving forward with similar projects. The challenge with building a thriving technology sector is that the infrastructure must be there before it can begin to take hold. Internet infrastructure is a different animal. It's very difficult to recruit new tech companies to Cheyenne with a promise. So for example, you know, Cheyenne Leads Economic Development Agency wouldn't use "we have internet in Cheyenne" as a selling point to bring a company here. We need to make the investments, both time and money, to first retain who we have and attract new companies here that will add to our local economy and provide high-paying jobs to our local labor market. Is infrastructure expensive? Sure it is. Fiber isn't cheap, and we all know that. Digging up the ground in streets isn't cheap either. Building conduits and small cell towers isn't cheap. But you know what? If there is probably one thing that Cheyenne could invest in, that is the safest bet that we could possibly do, it is in investing in our internet infrastructure. It is simply one of the safest investments our city could make for its future. The demand for faster internet speeds, cellular coverage, et cetera, isn't going away and will only continue to grow with each passing day. We cannot predict the future. No one knows what they or their business will do with the internet in the next few years. Information technology and our dependence on it continues to grow exponentially. So we can't predict the future, but we can do our best to prepare for it. It will be time and money well-spent. Our ultimate goal with this resolution was to lay the foundation for further exploration and consideration. The resolution was designed to create an atmosphere that encourages competitive broadband services in our city, allowing smaller and medium-sized internet service providers to come and do business here. As we all know, competition is great for everyone. Our goal should be to lower the cost of deployment for private companies. Plain and simple. If we can do this, consumers, businesses, and schools will all benefit from more options, pricing, and speeds based on their current and future needs. A competitive broadband market is a major decision factor for technology companies looking to relocate or grow in a community. Our current offerings are simply just not enough. Cheyenne does not have many choices for their internet service provider. Speeds and pricing are mostly lacking. Reliability needs improvements. Just last week, we started a brand-new class at Array, and it's actually our first female majority class, by the way. Our internet at Array has dropped just about five different times since introducing a new 4K live-streaming teleeducation that we're trying to pioneer for Wyoming next year. When we watch videos, I have to ask my students to turn off their Wi-Fi so we can watch the video without that dreaded buffering loader. We've upgraded to the fastest package possible within our budget. I am excited about Charter's announcement last month, and I'm really pleased by their investments, and I think it is a great and wonderful addition to improving our experience here, and I do definitely sincerely want to thank them for their support and investments. But we should never stop. That doesn't solve everything. We must keep going and keep pushing and continue to always look for ways that we can stay ahead of the curve. We are going to stay ahead of that curve when you consider the following six recommendations. One, Cheyenne should consider a dedicated person to the internet infrastructure initiatives in the near future. Cheyenne's needs will continue to differ from most of the communities across the state and should definitely partner with the new broadband manager at the Wyoming Business Council. Two, we should consider looking into building a publicly-owned, open-access conduit network. Lincoln, Nebraska, has been doing this for the last six years, and solid costs per megabits go from $50 for one megabit per second, and in the last six years, that has dropped to $0.32 over the course of six years of building the public conduit system. Three, adopt a one-dig policy. This just makes sense. When the ground is up, private entities should be informed to have and have access to the right-of-way and build new conduits or maintain them. Every time we dig up a street to access the right-of-way, we create all the issues that we're all too familiar with, unfortunately. Potholes, road closures, broken sidewalks, et cetera. A one-dig policy will help keep our streets and sidewalks in the best shape that they can and provide better servicing to our right-of-ways than when the ground is up. Number four, adopt a wireless facility ordinance. In preparation for the pending 5G networks, the city of Cheyenne must change its code to allow for the quick development and deployment of small cells throughout the city. Without this crucial infrastructure piece, Cheyenne simply will not have 5G networks when they launch in the coming years. Plain and simple. Five, eliminate or reduce the high right-of-way access fees. If we go back to our mission, which was to lower the cost of deployment for private companies, then this is one of the major barriers of entry to create competitive broadband market. And lastly, number six, build a downtown public Wi-Fi system. This recommendation actually came to us from a few different individuals and companies who have been wanting to see a free public Wi-Fi system installed in our downtown. After some interesting conversations and connections, we were able to find some private companies who were interested in helping contribute funds for the initial infrastructure build-out. Public Wi-Fi systems have become welcomed additions to many towns and cities across the country. They are just waiting for the city to approve this resolution so that an RFP can be sent out for bid. Wouldn't that be great for all of us? So in summary, this resolution lays the foundation for moving forward and continuing the conversations and strategies beyond this chamber. It will significantly help set the groundwork for a competitive broadband market, lowering the cost of deployment for private companies, setting the stage for future technology innovations that are looming, and making sure, as a city, that we are prepared for them. And most importantly, this resolution sends a strong message to the rest of the state and region that we want to make our capital city everything that it has the potential to become. And I want to sincerely thank the mayor and my broadband task force for all the hard work that they put into this resolution over the last eight months. When the task force was created in January, I gave it an internal nickname called the North Star Initiative. Last year, I saw a beautiful satellite photo of the Front Range from space, and it was easy to pick out where Denver and Fort Collins and Boulder were. And then there was this little black gap right above Wellington to Cheyenne, and then you could see the twinkling lights of Cheyenne. The article referred to Cheyenne as the northernmost terminus of the developing Front Range, and it was kind of this beautiful image, which made Cheyenne look like the North Star, and I just love that analogy. And there's another beautiful analogy, that Cheyenne should become the North Star of the state of Wyoming, leading the way by example on how we're going to plan on growing, diversifying our economies, and showing what can be done when we work together and are committed to the future of this great city we all call home, Cheyenne. Thank you, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. And just for other future speakers, I think what I'm going to do is just ask council if they have any questions of every speaker as they come up, rather than having people go back and forth. So are there any questions of Eric Trowbridge, ET? No questions? All right. Thank you very much. Other public discussion?
Ben Rowland, former member of the Cheyenne Broadband Task Force. I'm going to make my comments very, very brief because ET covered a lot of ground, and I think everybody here has probably heard me speak about the topic before, either in personal conversation or during the committee session last week. One of the primary points that I wanted to make was basically that the recommendations in the resolution tonight, they are, in my mind, viewed as sort of endpoint recommendations in some ways, and they don't necessarily spell out all the steps that might need to be taken to get there. And I just want to make that point because I know I've heard a lot of discussion about the data that might be necessary to get to that point. And because reference to that data is not included in the body of the memo, I don't want anybody to think that it wouldn't be a part of the development of the project or the ordinance or whichever recommendation we're referring to. So I just want to provide a little bit of feedback on that. I also want to make another point that generally for all of the recommendations, whether or not we're talking about a policy or the implementation of a new ordinance or even the building of any of the projects referenced in the memo, almost all those would require something to come back to the city council. So you, the governing body, would continue to basically retain control over a lot of these projects or recommendations moving forward. So we don't want anybody to be under the impression that a vote on the resolution tonight is a vote to pull out your shovels and break ground tomorrow. And I don't say that to minimize the importance of, you know, what we're doing now, but just to remind members of the governing body that you will continually have control over any of these policies or ordinances or projects moving forward. So I'm going to keep my comments to that, and of course, if you do have any questions, I'll be here. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome back to the podium, Mr. Rowland. Any questions of Mr. Rowland? Thank you. Any other public comment? Good evening.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, esteemed city council members. My name is Abby Peterson, and I'm here on behalf of, just as a citizen. I live at 2517 Van Lennan Avenue here in Cheyenne, Wyoming, and I work from home. I am an online educator for Wyoming Connections Academy, and I just thought I would come and tell you a little bit about my experience and the experience of my students. My students are all over the state of Wyoming, and we are online all day long. My experience with internet is that it's slow, and sometimes it affects the quality of my job. We're part of a network of schools all over the country, and they provide us certain things, like almost everybody uses a voice-over phone, but that's really difficult for me because my calls drop all of the time, and it's because the internet quality isn't strong enough. Videos don't load sometimes, the textbooks don't load sometimes, and I know it sounds silly, but sometimes when a helicopter flies over, I lose my internet and I am not able to connect with a student. And my students are statewide, so they're, obviously, some kids are in the sticks, and they don't, you know, their experience is different than ours in Cheyenne, but some of the features of our program can't be used that are used in other states, like our videos and some of the video games and interaction features just can't be used because the internet's not strong enough. And sometimes we say to the student, "Call tech support," and tech support says, "Call your internet provider." And then our students are like, "Oh, guess there's nothing I can do to make this work better." So I just wish that internet speeds were a little better in town, not just for me and my personal job, but for the benefit of our students and the students who need something a little bit different and are seeking online school as an option. And I urge you to support the broadband directive to increase our services for the sake of those who are working from home and predominantly online, which is an increasing sector every year, and also for the education of our students. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Good evening.
My name is Austin Heine, and I'm a public policy analyst for Wyoming Liberty Group. I am new to the Cheyenne area as of June of this year. Previously, I resided in Washington, DC, employed at the United States House of Representatives. And prior to that, I lived in Fort Collins, Colorado, so pretty familiar with the area. I attended Colorado State University and studied political science and economics, and during that time, I also worked in the state legislature in Colorado. I moved to Cheyenne not only because of new employment opportunities, but also because I believe that Wyoming is bastion of freedom and free enterprise. However, I fear that this publicly-operated broadband resolution threatens the very tenants of that freedom. Let me be clear. I do not doubt the intentions of this council, nor of the members of the Assembled Exploratory Task Force. This council should absolutely consider opportunities to expand and improve internet access for Cheyenne's population. However, I believe that more harm than good will result from the passage of this resolution, and I believe that for three main reasons. I have three main concerns. What is the financial viability of this proposal? What would this proposal lead to better internet services for Cheyenne? And is this a proper role of government? Starting with my first concern, I ask that the appointed task force has fully considered the cost and time investment in executing this resolution. The city of Cheyenne would be responsible for digging trenches and installing thousands of yards of cable throughout the city of Cheyenne. Cheyenne is over 20 years behind on the creation of this infrastructure. How long would it realistically take to catch up on the network infrastructure that private companies have spent years creating? Charter is on the verge of introducing gigabit internet speeds in the coming months, and it may take years for the city of Cheyenne to reach these same speeds and availability. Innovation in the ISP sector is exponentially growing. Gigabit speeds have only recently become viable in general, and gigabit speed standards will not last long. Any locality that considers providing internet service must be willing to dedicate time, money, personnel, into keeping pace with the ever-expanding internet infrastructure. There are countless other strains that this resolution would put on the public. For example, server farms consume an enormous amount of energy and would in turn consume an exorbitant amount of funds to properly operate. Adopting this resolution would commit millions of taxpayer dollars to developing and maintaining a whole new internet infrastructure that would quickly become Cheyenne's most expensive city project. There's a stark difference between internet infrastructure and, say, sewer systems. While sewer systems and power lines require upkeep, they do not often require innovation and overhaul demanded of the internet service provider industry. The private sector has demonstrated its willingness to undertake these challenges already, so I ask what is the necessity for the public sector to annex this role? Because of this challenge, I am concerned that Cheyenne's ability to keep pace, growing quality of service, we have seen in the private ISP business. My concern is that Cheyenne will constantly be one or more steps behind the private sector. As I mentioned, private companies are rolling out gigabit speeds in Cheyenne as we speak. Will Cheyenne be able to develop and implement comparable speeds by the time that Charter and CenturyLink and others introduce two-gigabit speeds? I fear the possibility that we will have public contractors installing fiber-optic cables, all while the private sector has invented a new mode of delivering internet service that Cheyenne will not be able to compete with, whether it's by satellite or whatever else. Will Cheyenne be able to adapt and keep pace with the competition, given the natural limitations of city government? While private companies dedicate the majority of their time and money innovating, creating new ways to deliver internet service to their customers, the city of Cheyenne may be unable to dedicate the same amount of resources to the same projects. I am concerned about what message this sends to Cheyenne's current ISPs. I understand that Point Five in the task force conclusion has mentioned incentivize ISPs to remain in the market. We cannot reasonably ask private companies to accept competition from the public sector, especially new ISPs. Governments can run at profit losses. Governments don't have to be reactionary to their customer bases, and governments do not have to sell their product. Simply residing in Cheyenne, we'd be asking our residents to subsidize and pay for a service they may not even want. Private companies do not have the luxury to operate under this model. Passing this resolution would disincentivize further investment by ISPs in our local economy. Even eliminating right-of-way access fees would not be enough to invite more competition into a market that contains a public option. Consumers would only be incentivized to utilize this new public utility because they would already be paying for it with their tax dollars. Economic rule of law would suggest that this resolution would cause ISPs to exit the market, not enter. We will not get more choices, we will get less. I think this begs the question as to whether more internet, or providing internet, is a proper role of government. Internet may be essential in a 21st-century lifestyle, but it does not necessitate government intervention. The vast majority of Cheyenne currently has two or more ISP options to choose from, which is more than you could say for the rest of the state. The private sector actively and adequately provided Internet service to residents of Cheyenne, so why is public Internet necessary? It was mentioned earlier that Lincoln, Nebraska, uses these public fees. Just did a quick Google search, and they're not even providing the fastest speeds in the city, and they're not even providing the cheapest. Is this council convinced that the city can provide a higher quality of service at a cheap rate than the ISPs who have operated in Cheyenne over 20 years? Would Cheyenne be forced to consider tax increases to keep up with the expanding costs associated with Internet service? I can point to my hometown of Fort Collins, who recently adopted similar provisions and began the process of creating a public Internet service. So far, this project has proved to be a logistical bureaucratic nightmare that will drain the city of millions and millions of dollars in resources. You do not have to look far past our backyard to see that public Internet services are not easy or cheap to implement and maintain. Both Fort Collins and Longmont, Colorado, have had major struggles. Both these cities have larger tax bases than Cheyenne does, so how can we expect the citizens of Cheyenne to perform at higher levels, or the city of Cheyenne to perform at higher levels? Cheyenne would do well to learn from Fort Collins' mistakes. This council should pause and consider generation-long consequences of creating public Internet service. Nobel Prize-winning economist Milton Friedman once said, "There is nothing more permanent than a temporary government program." So I ask this council if they are willing to commit a long-term future of the city to a new public utility, a system that would outlive my children, my children's children, to be economically viable. Instead, I recommend that this council consider free-market solutions to Internet access to invite more competition, better service, and lower costs to the public. Cheyenne City Council should consider eliminating or lowering public right-of-way access fees and franchise fees for both future and existing ISPs. This would actually invite competition and provide more options and provide better service without the burden on taxpayers. Thank you for your time, and I'm open for quite a few questions.
Thank you. Are there questions? Any questions? Thank you for your comments tonight. They're appreciated.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. My name is Adam Marsh, and I live at 901 Country Club Avenue. I would like to speak first off that after 10 years in Wyoming, having moved here from Idaho, I like it, and my one real complaint, one thing that I'd like to see more of, is more growth in the community, more effort to bring in new services and improve the services that we have, and I think this is a great effort to do that. And I'd like to say something specifically towards what the Wyoming Liberty Group representative just said. He brought up some good points, some valid points, some things that we should be thinking about and potentially concerned about, but all of the things that he brought up are for the next step on the road. This resolution is to take one step further and begin looking at actual projects, begin looking at what are the actual costs of putting the pipe in the ground? Who are the companies that would actually be willing to lay fiber through that pipe? Who would we really partner with, and what would the actual costs be? That's when we should start asking the questions of, is it economically feasible for us? Is it something that we can sustain over the long term? This resolution should allow us to get there. We should be able to ask those questions and actually dig into those numbers, and to vote that down now before we actually know what the economic viability of this is, I think would be detrimental to this community, and I hope that people would be willing to take that next step and actually look at the numbers and the true feasibility of this project. So I would encourage members of the council to vote affirmative on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
My name is Dale Steenburgen. I'm president of the Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce. I guess I would start by saying, I neither think that this is a challenge to the foundation of our democracy, nor do I think this is a panacea that will solve all problems. It's neither one of those. I do think we're talking about a topic that is very important to business in our community. As somebody who represents over 1,000 businesses here in Cheyenne, it is an issue that pops up for a lot of different reasons. So I commend the mayor and the task force that did their work, and you can hear about great work that Eric's doing at his school, and there's a lot of exciting things happening related to tech in Cheyenne. But as I was sitting there thinking about this, a couple of things popped into my mind. One thing I thought about was that about 18 months ago, the chamber picked this issue up, and we looked at costs all up and down the front range, and a big assumption is being made, that we are more expensive for the same service than all of those, right? But a lot of people like stuff for free, so even though it might not be more expensive than those other communities than our competitors, it's still not good enough. And I was thinking about this project sitting right out here in front, and I wonder what the approach of the city would be if I bid on this project, and I was the cheapest bidder, and I showed up with a horse-drawn buggy and a shovel and said, "I'm going to do the park right across the road." He said, "Well, you wouldn't even give me the time of day." And I said, "Okay, well, as the city, why don't you buy me a brand-new shiny truck and buy me all the equipment that it would take to do it, and I can still bring the bid in cheaper than the guy that I'm competing against?" And of course, it would be ludicrous for the city to do that, but in some ways, that's kind of what we're talking about here. So I guess my point is, there's a lot of things with this that the chamber strongly supports. We know we want to keep growing. We know we want to be prepared for 5G. We know we want faster speeds in areas. We know we have kids in poverty that need Internet access to be able to have a good future. We know that in historic buildings downtown, there are places where it's very expensive to get that hooked up. So the majority of the items on here, we would strongly support, but how they are done is very important. And I always think that the people have paid the freight over the years, the providers that have been in our community, the providers that have literally put us on the map. I can tell you, when you go to Fort Collins, or you go to Omaha and talk to the chamber directors there, which I do, they are in awe of what we have in Cheyenne. We have a giant river of Internet. Sometimes we have a problem hooking into that river, and we need to fix that, but there are, we have a lot of good things here. So I'm not here to tell you to kill this. We support a lot of what's on here. What I would tell you is, is that we need private sector business at the table, having a big piece of this discussion. You know, just like, I always get a little nervous at the word "free Wi-Fi downtown." Free to who? Right? I'm all for that, right? So the chamber has actually supplied free Wi-Fi for a long time, and finally, the depot now supplied, there's free Wi-Fi all over the plaza, there's a booster in the plaza, certainly it needs some upgrade, but as Eric said earlier, there's some possibilities for that, right? But at the end of the day, somebody pays for that. Somebody somewhere is paying for that. You know, I was talking to the chamber director from Chattanooga, which was held up for a long time, as kind of the example of how cities could own Internet around the country. And Christie, one of the things she said was that, "Well, you know, now, we've got big upgrades, so we're going to have to go to the taxpayers and ask for some more money." So I would encourage you just to think about some of these issues and make sure that our business partners, who've been good partners with us, continue to be that, and that they are at the table, and that they help us with the conversation so that we can get to a good solution. Just in closing, I appreciate what the work the committee did. Again, it's a very important issue, and I would just ask you to think carefully as we go through this. We would like to see these divided so that we can talk about each one. Certainly, the one-dig policy, we ought to have it like yesterday. But there again, it's how that, what that policy reads. Are you forced to do something, or are we going to send a note out and say, "Hey, we're going to be doing a dig? Everybody needs to know." So there are very positive ways we can do this, and there are very destructive ways we can do this. And I know everyone's very excited, but we should spend the time to make sure that we do it correctly so we aren't having the same conversation in a few years. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Well, hold on. Are there questions for Mr. Steenburgen?
Yes, sir. Or, excuse me, yes, ma'am. Just one. Because this is one of the reasons why I was a sponsor on this resolution, is when I, 18 months ago, when I went to the luncheon with, for the chamber, when they had CenturyLink and Charter, and it came to an end, and in most cases, when I, when they run over a little bit, everyone offers the courtesy to stay, but when half of the business community got up and left, when the ceremony wasn't even completed, I watched the bondi language of our business community just walk out, walk outside the room, that they were through hearing it. And so I guess, from your point of view, how do I justify to my business community that this isn't an action that we need to pursue?
So I'm not against the action. I am against all this action. I'm not against anything, I guess. What I'm trying to get you to do is just take into consideration some of these concerns that I've brought up. So as this moves forward, and we start talking about these particular issues, we can get down to some detail. I mean, you know, it's just like the conduit in the ground. That can mean a lot of different things, right? That can be serving kids who can't afford Internet and making sure that they have the ability to do that, so the city steps in to meet that necessary goal because there isn't money to do that. Or that can mean that the city is owning and operating a wireless system. So there's a lot of room in there. So I think all, I'm not here to kill anything. I'm just here that we, as we move forward, we need a lot of different people at the table, and I know that we heard a couple of times, that at the end of the day, the math does become important, right? What is the comparative number for us for costs for one gig of service, or at any level of service, compared to our competitors? What is the availability? What neighborhoods have availability? Who don't? Right? So I think that's the only thing I'm saying, is that we need caution as we move forward so that we make good solutions, so we aren't still talking about this in 20 years. And I do think that we have private sector providers that can be an important part of the solution if we give them a chance to do so. And I'm not saying they haven't been included at all, but certainly their voices need to be heard loudly in order for us to solve this, right?
Are there other questions for Mr. Steenburgen?
Just to follow. And I take your consideration into account, knowing the five recommendations that, knowing for the last few years that I've been on here, that once these actual items came before, whether it be a right-of-way issue, a one-dig, or everything else, all these are actually going to be itemized that would come forward on a council agenda for approval anyways, and I think Mr. Rowland actually stated that. So as far as the private sector being involved in those conversations, each of these items, as they come forward, they would be a party at the table as each item came up. So I guess if that's something that's missed, you know, that all of us are going to review this all again.
I think the problem, Councilman Johnson, is that, you know, it doesn't necessarily say that. That's why I'm bringing it up. Certainly, you will bring those forward, and that's great, but I do think there needs to be some consideration to make sure that that happens. I mean, I don't think that's that big of a deal, to put some language in there that says, "Hey, we're going to consult with these partners and make sure they're at the table."
Thank you. Are there other questions to Mr. Steenburgen? Other questions? Okay, I have a couple of questions. Referencing back to your people knocking on our door in a horse and buggy, are you suggesting that Aaron Sapko with ACT out of Sheridan, and Brian Worthing, who represents Visionary out of Gillette, who have been knocking on our doors and are not able to afford to do business here in Cheyenne, do you consider them horse and buggy operations?
So I guess you, I guess I wasn't clear on that, so let me explain. What I'm saying is, is that there is a cost to do business, right? That guy with that horse and buggy, if he wants to have a contract with the city, he's going to have to pony up some money. Now, if he has to pony up a money that's unfair or unreasonable, that's different. But I think a lot of the businesses that, this is a cost of doing business, right? And we want it to be as cost-effective as possible. However, you know, if it is a part of your business, you are going to have to realize that it is going to be a significant cost if you are an Internet-based business, right? Or you are reliant on broadband. So we're going to have to look, that's why I think the comparatives are important, right? So if somebody can go to Fort Collins and do it half as cheap as here, then we got a problem, but, you know, the data that we looked at, certainly that didn't say the case. So I wasn't saying anything about those businesses, and if that's what came across, I, that was not the intention to say anything negative about anybody that might be coming.
I appreciate that clarification. My other question is, are you familiar with communities in Wyoming that have offered broadband, excuse me, free wireless in their downtowns that go out actually for RFPs with private individual companies and essentially offer, you know, two hours free if you watch my 20-second video on where to get your coffee in downtown Sheridan or downtown Powell? Are you familiar with any of those free Wi-Fi services in those downtowns?
I know there's several, and we'd support that, right? So, you know, free wireless in the Depot Plaza, and visitors, and, you know, young professionals that are wanting to gather and get online and do some things, we certainly support all of that under most conditions, right? I think there's, I guess that's what's important, though, is what you mentioned is about talking to these companies, making sure that it's a partnership that is put together by the community that makes sense. Certainly, we're open to any of that. Certainly, that would be a positive thing. We'd like to see that in a lot of public areas. Now, if we're talking about wireless that is going to be supporting businesses that the rest of the taxpayer base is going to be supporting, that would be a different topic. But if we're talking about, you know, public areas, certainly that would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you very much. Other public comment? Other public comment? Ms. Tucker, I think, oh yeah, somebody right behind you. I'm going to let her sneak in. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Bria Hammack. I am about a decade-long Cheyenne resident and a graphic designer by trade. I work for Big Horn Design Studio up in Sheridan, as of six months ago, full-time as their creative director. So that move has kind of brought this initiative into the forefront of my everyday life, I guess. I was so lucky to be offered this position as a mom of two kids, to be able to do the career that I love and never will not do, but with the ability to, you know, pick up my kids from school, go to their sporting games, all that kind of stuff, make my own schedule. And about six months ago, when I kind of ventured into this new realm, I realized how abysmal our Internet service is. And, you know, it is between the video calls that get dropped with my employer and, you know, the ridiculously low download and upload speeds for all of my video files and graphic files and all of that kind of stuff. It implements my day in a way that I really would have never thought would have been the case. I don't really want to go on and on about the pros and cons. I just wanted to let you guys know that there is a growing subset of our population that this affects, in a way that this is the kind of career that I've always wanted, and I will not give up, but I urge you guys to at least open a window or a door to have these decisions be able to be made, you know, made in the way that we need to explore these kind of things that some of the other speakers have said. But I just would love the ability for the city to be at the forefront of this and allow people like myself to bring in a full salary that is then being injected into our economy, not taking up the design jobs and/or tech jobs that we have available here. It was just a great opportunity that I was given, and I'm really excited to stay here and raise my family here and do it. I would just love the ability to do it efficiently and in a way that I don't have to be explaining to my employer why, you know, things were an hour late, or I was talking to clients and, you know, we couldn't continue the meeting, et cetera, et cetera, issues that are unfortunately well without, or well outside of my realm of control and have become very frustrating, and I would assume are going to continue to stay that way. So I appreciate your ears and consideration, and everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. Are there any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Ms. Tucker.
Good evening. Vicki Tucker, Cheyenne Downtown Development Authority. We support the adoption of this resolution. Rome wasn't built in a day, but you start with the step, and I have full confidence, faith and confidence in the governing body to take the pieces of the recommendations and move through them in an efficient and eloquent way that's really going to serve the needs of the community. So I feel confident in that, and I support this. When I was looking at kind of other pieces of information about it, I actually found an article from Forbes magazine that's titled, "You Don't Promote a Competitive Broadband Market by Prohibiting Competition." Boom. It's kind of there. It feels, and I'm a newcomer here, but I didn't have much choice we got when we moved here. But one thing this article says is, "Robust competition incents businesses to provide consumers with better services on better terms. Often, through the rigors of competition, companies come up with winning offerings. Other times, the offerings sound like a good idea until they face the ultimate test, the consumer. It's only after consumers have had the opportunity to vote with their pocketbooks can we tell which goods and services are valued and which are not." So competition is good. I would like to see a more open market. You've heard kind of the horror stories from Array, and then from the graphic artists, and from the educator, online educators. So I think this really is an issue that needs to be addressed. So I think this really is an issue that needs to be addressed. What a beautiful thing for the seeds of a downtown tech hub to be sown, and we can thank Array for starting that small sector that has already attracted to tech businesses. But if we continue to have these issues with speed and access, then it's not going to let us grow that nurtured little tech sector that has this wonderful ability to make a big difference in this downtown. You heard what the salaries are for an employee to start. That, I would say, for most employees in the downtown is much higher than usual. We need that. We need that kind of spending power downtown to help support the businesses that are here and to help grow other businesses. So from our point of view, competition is good. We applaud the work that the committee's done. We support the work. And as I said, we believe the governing body has the, you know, you, you can take, you will take pieces of this. You will work through it in a very comprehensive and well-thought-out way to move it forward, however it moves forward. But we ask for your support of the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions, Ms. Duggar?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shainer.
Through you to Ms. Duggar. Ms. Duggar, thank you for, for your testimony. I just want to be clear. So the DDA Board voted to adopt, to build a publicly-owned, open-access conduit network within a discreet area as a pilot project?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.
My name is Craig Bowle. I am the Director of Software Development for Language IO. I have been very fortunate to call Cheyenne my home for the last 16 years. I graduated from the University of Wyoming with a computer science degree. And I, first of all, I want to thank ET, the mayor, and the task force for all the hard work that they have done. I am really wanting to push that this gets approved so it doesn't get put to the backburner. That's my biggest concern, is we'll come up with excuses to say no now, and then it won't come up. I think it's important that discussion continues. From everything I understand, approving this doesn't, you know, obligate the city to anything other than we continue to keep it a priority, which I think is an absolute necessity, especially to keep young people in our community. You know, we continue to talk about wanting to diversify and keep our, you know, all our smartest and brightest in the state. And I think this shows a lot in doing that. And I think it's great. The charter has, you know, said that they're going to bring gigabit. I think the timing is interesting, considering the task force. And I also have concerns, you know, I'll believe it when I see it. Because you see in the news, for example, they are getting kicked out of New York State for not keeping promises. So I think competition is good, and from what I understand, this promotes competition. So I strongly recommend moving forward with this. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carrie Cuffney. I live at 901 Country Club Avenue in Ward One. And I wanted to share a realization that I had at one of the public engagement sessions with the broadband task force. And we were kind of sharing our stories and our experience with the ISPs in town, and the charter representative asked me, well, why have you never called? Or he asked if I had ever called. I said, well, I haven't. And he said, well, why not? And that was when I realized just how accustomed to bad service and getting the runaround I have become. Everywhere I've lived, and I had charter in the previous city I lived in as well, which is why I went with CenturyLink initially in Cheyenne, had a terrible experience, went back to charter, and now I'm out of options. I don't have anywhere else to go. I tried yesterday to call customer support. Both of the numbers had an automated message for charter saying that they were no longer in service or had been changed or moved somewhere. The only number that did work, you can probably guess, was billing. So I can pay my bill, but I can't call about the poor service. And that is where I've become frustrated as a citizen. There's very little that I can do. I can call over and over and over with no results. When a city council steps up and approves a resolution, not even to buy or set up a public internet service, but simply to look at options and shine a light on the problem and learn more, I agree. I think that's part of why we're seeing this gigabit offer, which frankly, I don't need. I need basic reliable internet that works. I don't need gigabit necessarily. So I strongly encourage you to adopt this resolution. I would just emphasize again that you're not buying public internet, we're not putting in free Wi-Fi. You're simply doing more exploratory analysis that citizens individually are not able to accomplish on their own, but this body can. And I would really appreciate it if you would support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Thank you very much. Good evening.
My name is Evan Asher. I've lived in Cheyenne for 20-plus years. And as stated tonight, let's be honest, Cheyenne's behind when, when it comes to the providers that we have, being able to provide the fastest speeds. And on top of what was brought up, of the fact that as of right now, Cheyenne cannot support a 5G network. And I don't, something that's not been brought up tonight that I think needs to be pointed out is what a 5G network brings, what's called the Internet of Things, IoT. And that opens up a world of things for Cheyenne. IoT brings instant access for medical, for our police department, fire department, you name it. It opens up a world of stuff for not just the citizens, but for helping our community as a whole. You know, being able to help out the sheriff's department and everybody so that they have an instant access where they can be able to pull up files and do what they need to do right there. You know, the Internet of Things is something that is continually expanding to where, you know, they have, from the research that has been done where I work, which is a telecommunications team with DISH, they have the ability to be able to do surgeries across the world. And with, and, you know, with a response time of microseconds, it's, it's phenomenal. And so just being able to have a push to look into this, and it's not something that I think needs to, you know, it needs to be done and paid for by the city, but just having the availability to be able to have this 5G network that can do an Internet of Things for the community is something big that I think Cheyenne needs.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Eric Rasmussen. I work for Charter Communications. I, I was on the Cheyenne Broadband Task Force, and as mentioned, we did a lot of hard work, a lot of ideas, a lot of recommendations floated to the surface. And I think with those recommendations, in whatever form they come, we want to be at the table, we want to be in the discussion, we want to see how we can solve those recommendations. We definitely want to be a partner, partner here in Cheyenne. Mentioned teachers. We did mention at the Public Service Commission, or Committee, that we do have what's called Spectrum Internet Assist, and families that qualify, kids are on free and reduced lunch. We, we do have internet service for them at a reduced rate of $14.99 a month. So that's something here in Cheyenne that can reach out to the community, lots of kids, lots of educators. Yeah, basically, I want to say we look forward to working with the city and those recommendations moving forward, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
I guess for clarification, since you were a member of the task force, are you willing to give the public an acknowledgement of why you were no on the, on all five recommendations?
Right. I, I did deliver a, a letter to the task force chairman, and, and I think that, that letter does speak for itself, without reading the letter.
And Madam Mayor, we all received that as well.
Mr. Shainer. I think for the point of public comment, were you, Mr. Johnson, does that answer your question?
Basically ask if he was willing for the public's behalf that came in attendance, since obviously no one in the public got the email that we got, if he was willing to state the explanation to the public more so than to us.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Sure. I, I, I mean, I can go through the letter point by point, if, if that's what you'd like, sir.
Just a summary.
Okay. And, and I, I think, as I said, you know, I, I won't paraphrase the whole letter. There was a lot of work done, and there were a lot of things identified. On that task force, when we voted on each of the recommendations, I was the one no vote on all those recommendations. I mean, that, that's in the memorandum, and anybody can see that. If I had one thing to point out, a lot of these topics are, you know, there was discussion, there were cases looked at, cities looked at, but, but we need more data to see exactly what those recommendations entail, how much those recommendations may cost. And I think, you know, who's going to own those? Is that going to be government-owned? You know, I think for us, you know, investing, you know, millions of dollars of private money and then to compete with the government, I think that, that was a concern to us. But, but as I said, I think on a lot of these points, we're not too far off, and we definitely want to be at the table when these are discussed individually and want to see how we can help up, come up with solutions.
Mr. Rasmussen, then I'm, I'm confused. If you are saying that there are points of the five recommendations that you would be in favor of, can you let us know what those possible ones are?
Well, and I, I wouldn't say we're in favor. I'm, I'm saying we're close on some of those ideas. For instance, a dig-once policy, those aren't a bad thing. If, if it was, you know, dig and, and put, and be asked to put the conduit in for other people to use as a private company, that's something we probably wouldn't be in favor of. However, if you have annexed land and you're going to build a, a big new subdivision, you know, 300-plus homes, fewer homes than that, we want to know about it. Because if there's a way, when those trenches are open and people can get facilities planted in the ground, we, we want to be there. I, I mean, everybody wins in that situation.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Just to follow up.
Mr. Johnson?
I guess, because you're, you kind of have to toe a fine line between your corporate employer and the task force that you were with. So I guess when I hear that we would need more data, I guess, in a public-private partnership, I guess I would rely on you, you know, in those, you know, uncertain terms because of, you know, what you're obligated to your employer, that if any data was to come forward to the task force, you'd be the first person I would actually ask, do you have any data that can support, you know, why this is feasible or why this is not feasible? So that's just basically an observation, since I wasn't on the task force. When you make those statements, that, you would have been the first person I would have asked.
Sure. And, and I mean, I'm not sure if that was a question or a statement?
No, it's just a statement.
Okay.
All right. Other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Rasmussen, for your time on the task force. Very much appreciated. A lot of hours were spent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Other questions by the public? Good evening.
Mayor, City Council. I'm Courtney Thompson, Chief Information Officer at Greenhouse Data. I was also part of the committee here, so I will bore you all of the things you've already heard and try to just give you my perspective on this, probably more from a business side than the actual committee. You know, things I saw as advantage here that you haven't heard tonight is, something that resonated for me is we have a river of bandwidth outside of town. We really do. I can get 100-gig connection to my data center for multiple providers. I can't do that downtown. I think the intent of this was really to bring that water to a starving population downtown and figure out how we could do that in the best way. We didn't have all the answers. We didn't have enough time to spend on it and finding all those answers. So we wanted to open up avenues for you guys to start making decisions and really facilitate moving the ball forward for the town, the, the community, and for us as businesses. I have a hard time relocating employees to Wyoming, and sometimes, you know, what I hear in the background after I talk to someone who has declined a job offer was, I really just couldn't convince my family that Wyoming was the place to be. And when I dig through that, a lot of those things come down to technology, and they want to do, have the ability to incentivize their kids to come here and have top-notch schooling, to have the ability to chat with grandma across the country, and then for them to actually have their spouse employed in a telecommuting scenario, so they could keep their job, maybe stay with their existing company, but yet still relocate to Wyoming, bringing top talent to the area. So these have just been barriers for us as a company that I'd like to see removed. And so that's what I would leave you with, and I'll stand to questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Again, thank you as well for your time on the task force. Other comments by the public? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Orr. Councilmembers, my name is Tom S. Beddige. I was a recent graduate of the Array School of Technology and Design. Recently this weekend, I was over at the University of Wyoming participating in the WyO Hackathon, which was a fantastic time. I can say I'm, this is an interesting issue for me, because on the one hand, I have absolute agreement with the idea that having a fast internet here is a huge incentive for tech companies and a big part of diversifying our economy. On the other hand, I do see the business case for a lot of these things. You know, businesses do live and die by the ballot sheet. And so I would ask that, I do generally support this, these five recommendations, but I would add some addendums, I guess, some additional things that I would like to see supported. And generally, those would be that, as a citizen, it's pretty difficult for me to dig in deep and find information, you know, it's just pretty difficult to find. I've seen some of the franchise agreements that the city council has signed with other companies. I can't remember the company's names off the top of my head, but to say the least, there are quite a few costs in there that are embedded by the city. And I think that, you know, I'm not sure what the costs are of digging up a road and whether the city profits on that or not, but I do think that lowering those costs to at least at cost or near there, you know, we certainly shouldn't be digging up the roads for a private company at zero cost. I don't think that that's reasonable for the taxpayer to encumber themselves with either. But I do think that it would be useful in going forward with the public debate for us to perhaps see more franchise agreements, perhaps like the ones that we see with Charter and CenturyLink, and have those available to the public, maybe in PDF format, online and everything like that. So generally speaking, I would ask that we do support these five things. Like my colleagues back there, the timing of Charter's announcement is curious. But generally speaking, I think that these five things don't commit the city towards anything in particular, except exploring the possibility. And I certainly do think that having fast internet here in Cheyenne, having fast and more reliable internet, which, you know, I've, I'm hearing testimony from other members of the public, that, that is pretty shocking, actually. You know, like I said, I would generally support these, these five recommendations. And I would like to add that it would be nice to have a little bit more transparent information on, on how the city manages relationships with the companies that are building internet for us. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for coming here tonight. Okay, any other further comments for the first time? Anyone else for their first time? For their second time, Mr. Rowland, I saw you popping up.
Ben Rowland, Cheyenne Broadband Task Force. I mainly just wanted to respond to a couple small points, one of which I do think is fairly important, that seemed to indicate to me a pretty fundamental misconception about what we're discussing here tonight. I heard a lot of talk about Cheyenne providing internet service, and that is one thing we're definitively not talking about tonight. Cheyenne is not looking to get into the business of providing internet service over broadband. That's just not something we're trying to do. In fact, that was actually a topic of conversation on the task force, and we agree that we don't want to get into that business. That's a private sector job. We're not trying to do that. So you won't find any recommendation in the memo about the city of Cheyenne attempting to provide internet service via broadband. That's just not, not something we're recommending we do. So. I also wanted to follow up as well. I felt like there was some commentary that suggested maybe that these recommendations were not coming from business. I was on the task force. At that time, I was a city employee, so was Councilman White. Everybody else on the task force was loosely defined, I suppose, a member of the business community, either an internet service provider, somebody working in the tech field, or perhaps even, I think there was a lawyer that served. even, I think there was a lawyer that served, you know, a number of tech clients. So I just point that out, and I think that's a little bit of a misconception as well, that I think these recommendations, in fact, are coming from representatives of the business community. So I just want to be fairly clear on that. Also, the recommendations themselves are not precluding anybody from doing any data gathering in the future. Want to make that point again. It seemed like there was some commentary that maybe suggested we're jumping all in, and I think there's a long road ahead where we can do anything and everything that we want, but the council, again, to reiterate my point earlier, will have their hands firmly on the reins during that process. So those are my last comments, and of course, I'm available to answer any questions. So, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Rowland? Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, any other further public comments? Further public comments? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Webel.
Madam Mayor, the motion to adopt failed at the Public Services Committee. Therefore, there was no recommendation on this item. But for the sake of discussion, I so move second.
Moved by Mr. Webel, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by council. Discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Laborin.
Well, certainly, this isn't a subject that I'm thoroughly aware of, but this process, I believe, has brought forward a lot of information that is useful to the community. And I would like to point out a couple of things here in the resolution, particularly the recommendation, build a publicly-owned, open-access conduit network within a discreet area as a pilot program. Well, I believe that's exactly what the voters voted on when they did the Reed Avenue Corridor Plan. That is very much a tech area. That is something very much of this concept. It is a discreet area, and we're beginning our final design of that area. I believe it's only appropriate that this be seriously considered, and that's exactly what we're talking about here. So the idea that the city of Cheyenne is going to go into some massive program of conduit laying just isn't realistic. I think it's a scare tactic. I think that we all who sit up here are very aware of our budget, very aware of our responsibilities. And I don't know that there's any one sitting up here that doesn't understand that we are not going to launch into some massive program to compete with private business. That's just absolutely not realistic in terms of how this city operates. And I'd also point out that under the now-therefore-resolved element, the recommendations of the committee are hereby adopted, and the city will work expeditiously to achieve the recommendations. Well, that's where we pick up a lot of information. That's where we look at these various elements and take them to specifics, as I just mentioned, of the Reed Avenue Corridor project. So we're not going to run off and start doing some sort of wild, anti-free-enterprise effort. What we're interested in is a free-enterprise effort that provides competition to help these individuals and many more throughout the community get that service eventually that they need. And I'd like us to cast back many, many years ago in this community. Cheyenne was one of the first communities in the United States to adopt an electric light system in the 19th century. I don't have the actual discussion that took place. If anyone has, I'd sure like to hear about it, but I imagine it was something similar to this. Oh, it's expensive. Oh, the government shouldn't be doing it. Oh, it's untested technology. Oh, it's going to change. Oh, it's not regulated properly. Well, I think there's a real similarity here. But I do know that in our city's history, when that electric light service came to us as fast as we could possibly get it, it helped our image. It helped people look at our community as being a cutting-edge place that looked at these issues and proceeded, rather than tagging along behind. And of course, we all know what's happened since, but I think there's a comparable result here, and it's time that we listen to these individuals who have brought forward these ideas, not be afraid of some big government idea here. There's no big government here. It's just us. So I hope that we adopt this recommendation, looking back at through our history and using our common sense to say that competition is a good thing and is part of our responsibility to try to encourage it. And there's nothing here in this resolution that binds us to anything that won't come back for us to discuss and consider as we proceed. So I speak very strongly in favor of adoption, and I hope we take that course. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I first want to, of course, thank you, Madam Mayor and the task force, for moving the needle on this discussion. There's no one that doesn't agree this is, this is an important topic for the future of our community and really of our state. So I applaud the efforts of everyone that's been involved and everybody that came here to speak tonight. This is an important topic. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to come share your thoughts with us. One thing I've noticed, spending some time up here on the dais, is that these larger sort of philosophical hot-button issues become these broader, you're either for fast internet or you're against it if you don't vote on this specific proposal before us. And, you know, we have to really dig into the details and make sure that everything that we're voting on is something we support, that we fully understand the implications of it, and that we're going to bind the city and ultimately taxpayer funds to that. And so the devil is always in the details. And so we really need to understand that I think everybody up here wants to see better broadband connectivity, more affordability, better quality. So that's not the issue. The issue is, what's the appropriate manner for the council to move this agenda that's been started forward here tonight with what's been placed in front of us? And with that said, Madam Mayor, I'm going to propose an amendment, and I'll go slow. And if I get a second, I'll explain the amendment. So, Madam Mayor, I move to amend the resolution as follows. A resolution strike adopting and say acknowledging receipt of the recommendations of the Cheyenne Broadband Task Force, rest remains the same in the entitled portion. Moving down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to the Fifth Whereas Clause, it says, "In response to the mayor's request for recommendations, the CBTF has submitted a memorandum, including five recommendations." Change that to "including six recommendations," and then continue on, "which will enable the city to facilitate deployment of broadband infrastructure, comma, five of those recommendations being as follows," and the five bullets remain the same. Moving to the now-therefore-be-it-resolved portion, it would read, "Now-therefore-be-it-resolved by the governing body of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, that the five recommendations of the CBTF listed herein are acknowledged, period, strike the rest," and then add a new paragraph, "be it further resolved that before the city takes any steps other than research and studying on any of these five concepts, individual evidence-based proposals will be brought forward to the governing body for approval." And that's the end of my amendment. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Questions by, or excuse me, comments by the public on the amendment? Questions on the, or comments by the public on the amendment? Okay. Comments by council on the amendment?
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Shaner.
Just as the movement, an opportunity to explain. Thank you. So this is an issue of semantics and procedure for the governing body, and it is my understanding from experience up here and seeing how we conduct business, that general conceptual principles, the proper practice is to acknowledge receipt of those. An adoption means we are moving forward on something, and when we get a plan in front of us that has a specific location, a specific implementation plan, the cost of such a thing, a map where it's going to be located, for example, when you get to that level of detail, when something comes in front of the governing body, that's when it's time to adopt and move on it. But these are general conceptual ideas that could mean hundreds of different things, and so that's the reason for the change of acknowledging receipt versus adopt. Just a simple sort of technical correction in the Fifth Whereas Clause. One of the six recommendations that were mentioned earlier, that is hiring a full-time broadband employee, was removed by the sponsors of this resolution. So the resolution only contains five of the six recommendations from the task force. And so making that clear that the task force actually had six, but this resolution is only adopting five. And then, cleaning up the bottom, there was a reference to incorporate the recommendations as outlined in the memorandum, attached as Exhibit A. So again, it was incorporating all six of the recommendations through the memo in Exhibit A, which would be conundictory because the listed is only five, so that's a technical change. And then the last paragraph is just a way to be crystal clear with what pretty much everybody said tonight, is that we want these concepts to go forward, but when they do, they need to come back to the council with a lot more data and information before they are fully adopted and moved upon. So that's the rationale behind the amendment, and thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
I want to thank my colleague from Ward Two for the amendment, at least part of the amendment. I did pass some documentation to my other colleagues, which I had planned to offer to amend the language to include similar clarification in the Fifth Whereas Clause. So for what Councilman Shaner has done both there and in the therefore-be-resolved sections, I completely support. However, I can't support the amendment in its entirety because I don't support acknowledging, simply acknowledging receipt and changing the word "adopting" to acknowledging. And the reason is this. It's always been my understanding that when we discuss a resolution, that that specific resolution in question is non-binding. A resolution is an opinion. And we went through this argument in great detail when we discussed the nondiscrimination ordinance, and I thought that it, that other issues had come up in recent months where it seems, is it binding or is it not binding? I always thought that a resolution was non-binding and that an ordinance was. So I don't support changing the wording there. This resolution, I think, is a good one. Am I open for keeping the clarifying language? Absolutely. I think everybody is. For public's sake, the six recommend, there were six recommendations initially in the memo. The reason why, after discussing with members of the task force, we removed one of them, specifically the hiring a full-time broadband person. The reason why we did choose to remove that was because that the state of Wyoming has recently hired a full-time broadband person within the Wyoming Business Council. We, and also from our budget discussions and passing of the budget ordinance, we are capped as far as hiring. So we wanted to give the gentleman who was hired from the state a chance to kind of see what his role would be going forward with that, and that was the reason why we removed one of the six recommendations. So I do support the clarifying language. I do not support changing the wording from acknowledging to adopting.
Okay, are there other questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Can I get the last part that you read? The last whereas?
Shouldn't now be for it resolved? Or the last whereas?
Yeah, the very last one that you read into it on your change.
Madam Mayor, through you. "Be it further resolved that before the city takes any steps other than research and studying on any of these five concepts, individual evidence-based proposals will be brought forward to the governing body for approval."
Okay, so I guess a follow-up question.
Mr. Johnson?
Is this going to be private sector research that's provided, or is this a study that the governing body's going to be requesting? Exactly when you drafted that, what was your course of action that you thought would come before us?
Mr. Shaner.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Good question. I think it could come from anybody. It could come from an individual council member. It could come from a citizen. It could come from the executive branch. But whoever it comes from, it needs to be flushed out in great detail and supported by evidence. I think for us to adopt it, just like anything, we get a staff report, we get data, and we get an analysis of the applicable laws, et cetera. So I would envision something very similar to what we do with every other thing that we approve. It just depends on what entity it comes from.
Are there questions of?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Webel.
And this is from my colleague from Ward Two. Just a quick question on the language, the clarifying language is good. I like that, especially the part where it comes back before us. But since it does come back before us, can we, leaving the adopting in would be, in my book, fine. Because if we're adopting the plan, we still have to have the evidence before us so we can say yea or nay to each one of them. So I support most of his, except for the adopting portion.
Thank you. Are there other questions, comments? Questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Laborin.
Well, I certainly recognize where the discussion is going here, but I believe it's clear to everyone that cares to study the matter that a resolution is a statement of intent. What is our intent tonight? It seems to me that if we're not taking these recommendations and beginning the review, our intent to accept just doesn't have the impact, just doesn't have the intent that it needs. And I want to say that while I respect my colleague from Ward Two's opinion on this matter, it's very different than mine. Over and over again, I have seen the acceptance of, for instance, much more detailed, important plans that we spent a lot of money on. And when they were accepted, that was a negative to them. That was a question mark on the council's mind. And I can tell you that having been here, both in this position and as a citizen coming forward, that is one of the most difficult places you'll ever find. When you come back later and say, what did you mean by accept and what's happened since? It is the rejection of the intent. Our intent is clear here. Our intent is to foster competition. Our intent is to proceed with this on a very limited basis. It's certainly, there's no appropriation here. There's no review of code. This is a statement of intent, and I think the statement of intent that we should make is the one that this group recommended. I do want to say one final thing, and that is, certainly, the idea of hiring a staff person on a continuing basis was a non-starter, and I'm glad that it was removed. But that certainly doesn't mean we can't hire expertise. There are other ways to handle this matter. And if we're looking at the idea that growing government, a government that is interested in some sort of action that harms private business, that's not correct. in some sort of action that harms private business, that's not correct. What we're interested here in is seeing that we're moving forward. And I believe that we, as we come on to the consultancy that we have hired, which isn't as broad as this resolution, and we look at what we're going to be doing with the franchise agreement, there's a lot of knowledge that's going to come forward. And that knowledge is a good thing. The idea that we will have the ability, on the part of the city, to review these matters in a complete way, just isn't there. It's a statement of intent. Let's make the statement of intent that we believe that the task force recommendations are worthy of further analysis and study and proceed on that basis. Because frankly, without that acceptance, I think we are sending the wrong message instead of the right message. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
Some comments and will likely lead to some questions for Ms. Hackel. In terms of, some of this relates to the main motion, but I believe it does relate to the amendment as well. So adopting versus acknowledging receipt, and I look at these bullet points and they are, they're very broad, but they're very, I mean, I'll start with number one. Build a publicly-owned, open-access conduit network within a discreet area as a pilot project. And so what I consider adopt versus acknowledge receipt, my questions out of that bullet statement are where, when, open access to who. I know just off the top of my head, those are three multiple questions that are going to come to mind. And those not being clarified in this resolution, I have reservations with adopting versus acknowledge receipt. Number two, adopt a dig-once policy as soon as possible. When is that? What's the date on that? And how are we going to deploy that? How are we going to deploy that to all the, you know, the interested stakeholders? Number three, adopt a wireless telecommunications ordinance as soon as possible. When and what are the components of that telecommunications ordinance? And three, and I'm going to get back to number two and number three here with a question for Sylvia as it relates to the words adopt or acknowledge receipt. Number four, eliminate a lower, high-public right-of-way access fees. Eliminate or lower high-public right-of-way access fees. Are we going to eliminate them? Are we going to lower them? Are we going to define what high-public right-of-way access fees are? And then the final one, build a public Wi-Fi system within a discreet area in our city's downtown. You know, are we going to define downtown? Are we going to send that out to bid? What are the components that go along with that? And so if we don't change this language to acknowledge receipt and we actually adopt it, back to the bullet points number two and number three, which contain the words "adopt," if we adopt this, is that directing the council to do those two things and when? Ms. Hackle.
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Case. First of all, Councilman Case, back to sort of the question about adoption versus acknowledging receipt. I've not had an opportunity to study that in depth, but the practice of this council has certainly been to differentiate between the impact of those two terms, much as both Councilman Shaner and Councilman Laborn have articulated. With respect to specific adoption of these five recommendations, first of all, I don't believe you can change the language in two and three because that is the language of the recommendation from the task force. So if you are going to, whether you're going to acknowledge receipt of those recommendations or adopt them, whichever term you choose, I don't believe you can, or should at least, change the language of the recommendations themselves. What you choose to do with those recommendations is your choice. But that is the language that came to you from the task force. The answers are not all in this resolution. They aren't all in the entire memo of the task force. You have heard public input tonight that it is expected that each of these would need to be fleshed out in a far greater manner. So I hope that those comments are helpful to you, Councilman Case. If not, I will do my best to provide more of a response.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Hackle. And Madam Mayor, through you, I have no intent on changing that language. My question is, if we adopt this resolution as it relates to bullet point number two and bullet point number three, there are very few details and definitions surrounding those two. And since they contain the words "adopt," what would the consequences of council be? What would the consequences for the city to act be as related to those two versus acknowledge receipt?
Madam Mayor, through you, to Councilman Case, I do not believe that the lang, the repetition of the word "adopt" in bullet points two and three is any different than the words "build," "eliminate," or "build" in the other three recommendations. In other words, if you adopt the report, then you have the option to proceed in whatever manner, as Councilman Shaner said, whatever manner these items come forward. If I understand your concern correctly, Councilman Case, I really don't think adopting a resolution that has language in it that says "adopt" is any different than adopting a resolution that has language that says "build." In other words, "adopt" means we're going to take this document and move forward with it. Historically, this council has used the term "acknowledge" to say, thank you very much. We acknowledge we've received it. And then what happens next depends upon the will of the council. So do I think that you are binding yourselves? No. I think you have the option on all five points, even if you adopt, to, as you gather more information, to make a decision, for whatever reason, that this is not going to work. If I might, Councilman Shaner has actually prepared and provided to my office a draft ordinance relating to aspects of wireless telecommunication. And in fact, asked of the Public Service Commission how quickly we thought we could get that on the agenda. And I believe, Councilman Shaner, I said a month. You know, not the next council cycle, but the next one. And so, you know, those are the sorts of discreet individual actions that will need to occur, whether it's the dig-once policy, a wireless telecommunication, or anything to do with public right-of-way fees, et cetera. Those would have to occur, I believe, whether you adopt or accept. And if that wasn't enough of a roundabout legal answer, then I'll just go back to law school and work harder on that.
Thank you, Ms. Hackle. And just Madam Mayor, through you, thank you for that answer. And I think it shines a light on my concerns with adoption. We just don't know. And I'm certainly going to support the amendment as it stands because of, you know, just in thinking for three or four minutes, multiple questions come out of these bullet points. And I believe that it would be prudent for the governing body to deal with them one at a time and certainly support and keep this ball moving forward. And so I'll be in support of the amendment as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, through you. To my colleague, Councilman Case's concern, I would certainly say that, to your point, each of these five recommendations would have to come before the governing body on their own. And read, I mean, the task force wanted these recommendations to be general. There is a reason it says "as soon as possible" and not "by December 31st." There is a reason that it says "within a discreet area as a pilot project" without determining the specific area or the exact pilot project. So let's just take the bullet points one at a time. The publicly-owned, open-access conduit network pilot project, that would be left up to the governing body to determine where that pilot project would go, where that discreet area would be. And I assume that that would probably go before Public Service. Similarly, with bullet point number two, adopt a dig-once policy, that would have to go before Public Service Commission because it would have to be a change in the ordinance. Adopt a wireless telecommunications ordinance, you've heard it here. That's already underway. That's already something that our colleague from Ward Two is working on. Eliminate or lower high-public right-of-way access fees. Again, that would have to go before Public Service Commission and then before the governing body to get approved. Build a public Wi-Fi system within a discreet area. Again, it would have to go before Public Services Committee to determine where that discreet area is. So the concern, I think, while I understand it, I, I, no, I changed my mind. I don't understand it because it's going to come before the governing body, like any other change in ordinance, like any other policy or discreet, or defining a discreet area and defining what a pilot project is, like anything else. It's going to come before committee. It's going to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that and members of the business community to weigh in at committee, as well as both entities to weigh in at a meeting of the full governing body.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Perhaps another way to state this, as I see it, certainly there's some disagreement on the meaning of these words. But to me, if these recommendations are adopted, it means we are going forward with these recommendations. What the details of them are certainly will come back to us. But what my argument is, is that there is no data or information in front of us for us to even make the affirmative decision that, yes, we need to have a publicly-owned, open-access conduit network. And so I think we're jumping two steps at once by adopting. I think the first step is acknowledging these recommendations, getting more information on them, having them come back one by one with more specifics, then adopting them, not adopting them blindly without any data, and then moving forward and adopting something more specific in the future. I see an adoption as a very powerful term that binds us to moving forward on these five recommendations. So that's the distinction I make. But ultimately, Madam Mayor, this is an initiative and these are concepts that everybody wants to see move forward. And to me, the most important thing tonight is getting as many people on this dais, voting in favor of a positive move forward. And to me, acknowledging receipt is the way to do that. I think haggling over what "adopt" means versus some of the people that take that term more seriously than others, I think defeats the purpose of what I think we all want. We all want to achieve is for these items to have a positive outcome tonight and to move forward, as I heard time and time again, for further study and further exploration. And this amendment accomplishes that.
Are there any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess.
Mr. Johnson.
I guess I feel that I have the expertise in the room, from the Chamber of Commerce to all the tech firms and ISPs in the room. So I guess if I wanted data on when any of this could be done, I pretty much could ask it right now and have it done and say, well, that's the definition from the ISPs, that's the definition from the tech sector, that's the, from the Wyoming Liberty Group, from the Chamber of Commerce, and everybody's already here in attendance. So if they were to do it and say, okay, this is what it's going to take to actually do a publicly-owned, open-access conduit, okay, how long? There you go. Adopt a dig-once policy, we could pretty much scrap that one as for debate because the ISPs, the chamber, and everybody else, and even on council feels that a one dig is a good thing. Adopt a wireless telecommunications act ordinance as soon as possible, that would come back to us. And just by the research of talking with Charter on the Cable Act of 1924 and then the Telecommunications Act of 1986, just seeing how big those documents are, I can tell you that one might take a little more time. Granted, we're doing a smaller scale, you know, that's coming up soon. Eliminate a lower, high-public right-of-way, I think that's one that the ISPs, everybody is agreeance for, that needs to be going forward. And then to build a public Wi-Fi system, from this, we would have to put it out on RFP anyways, which goes out to the public center to put their bids on. So once again, we're inviting them into the equation. So I guess when it comes down to, you know, timelines and everything else, how soon could the ISPs get this up? How soon could, you know, we draft a telecommunications ordinance, depending on how good we want it to be? And, you know, all these fall in. The timelines and everybody present here could probably iron out this whole entire timeline right now and we could move forward with adopting, if that was the course we choose to take. Because some of it relies on us and others, we're going to have to co-mingle with the private sector to get these things done. So I guess basically, I looked at this, that this is a guideline for conversations that needed to take place. The private sector is going to have to be involved in every single aspect of this going forward. We already know our bonding capacity isn't there to actually take on what Longmont, Fort Collins, Chattanooga, and the rest of them did. That's already been well-established. We already know that we don't have the monies to pay a complete ISP staffing in our IT department. That's completely irrelevant. So we're going to have to rely on the private sector to pull these things for us because it's just not within the governing bodies or taxpayers' monies to make these things come to fruition as far as us taking on another commodity or utility. So I guess really, when we look at data, there's a whole roomful of people that are experts in every aspect of this field. So if we have, if we want data, you know, and that's our concern, is why we're stonewalling moving forward on this, I guess we have the, every expert in the room to tell us what, exactly what we need to know.
Any other discussion or questions by council? Okay. I have one, just for clarification as far as staff directive. I certainly understand the difference between acknowledge and adopt. However, in the now-for-it-beit resolved, to the sponsor, I have a question regarding the directive of staff because I believe that currently we are actually looking at hiring consultants. We don't have the staff on board to provide the necessary research and data to provide this, including your upcoming, you know, small tower wireless. I believe that we're going to be going outside of staff efforts for that. And so I believe that there may be a necessary change in that. And furthermore, I guess I really ask, and this probably may be the same question that Mr. Johnson was asking too, and that is, please, a definition of what evidence-based research is. Because I, it's my experience, I can probably bring you any kind of research. And if this is just simply an acknowledgement of receipt and not an adoption, who's evidence based, who's research and what is evidence-based to be able to come before and get essentially the majority of the committee to agree on what is presented and by probably somebody outside of staff? Because I simply don't have the staff. We don't have the staff to do this. We are having to contract to get the information that you want. We had to have a volunteer task force to spend dozens, if not hundreds, of hours to present to you today. So I guess I would ask for some clarification as far as how to implement what you are proposing.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. To your first question, I believe you're referring to the first sentence where it says, "be it further resolved that before the city takes any steps other than research and studying." Is that where you're referencing staff?
Correct.
Okay. So to me, city would include a contractor, staff or a contractor, that would be encompassed in city. And it would also include members of the governing body. And then evidence-based proposals, that's certainly open to interpretation. The way I read it and the way I understand it is simply commensurate with the staff packets and presentations that we get on a weekly basis. Those are certainly evidence-based and adequate in my eyes.
Mr. Shaner, to follow up, it's my, it's my experience that often it's not.
Mr. Shaner, to follow up, it's my experience that often it's not. And I would ask what kind of, thank you. Any other further comments by council? Further comments by council? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
May I see the hands of the ayes, please? Case, Shaner, Rennie, Una, and Cook. Five. And those opposed?
Could you repeat names for me, please, Mayor?
Okay. Just a minute, please. Okay, those opposed, again, please. Those opposed are Johnson, Layborn, myself, Royble, and that would be White down there at the end, and so the amendment fails.
High vote.
High vote, meaning the amendment fails. Okay. All right, we are now back on the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. President.
Is there no discussion on the main motion?
Oh, I apologize. No, we can have discussion on the main motion.
Public or?
We've had public comment. I thought we'd had public comment on this. We've had public on, we've had public, and I thought we'd had council discussion as well on.
No.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for keeping me in order. It's been a long night. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. We are opening it up for council discussion on the main motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
At a minimum, we need to fix some of the contradictory portions of this. So it sounds too like the additional "be it further resolved" was well-received. So, Madam Mayor, I will move to amend, starting again, but this time not in the entitled portion, but in the fifth "whereas." And that amendment would change, "The CBTF has submitted a memorandum including six recommendations, which will enable the city to facilitate deployment of broadband infrastructure." Five of those recommendations being as follows. And then we would move down to the "now, therefore, be it resolved" portion. And that would read, "Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, that the five recommendations of the CBTF are hereby adopted." Period. And then the last portion, there would be a new paragraph that would read, "Be it further resolved that before the city takes any steps other than research and studying on any of these five concepts, individual evidence-based proposals will be brought forward to the governing body for approval."
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. A discussion on the amendments.
Madam Mayor.
President, Rennie.
I do have some questions that have gone through this. And first of all, I want to explain my vote. I do think historically, we've always accepted acknowledged receipt of reports. I can remember even when the NPO had asked us for something to be done as a resolution, and we would not do that because, as I said, it's been our practice to acknowledge receipt. I also find it interesting to echo what council, my colleague from Ward Two said earlier. It's funny how this becomes an either-or proposition. None of us up here opposed any of these recommendations necessarily. But I even had a patient ask me that this morning. It's like, "Where are you on broadband? Are you for it against it?" And I'm thinking, "This is nuts. We're all for it." But anyway, so we have now a resolution form in front of us with, I think, some worthy amendments, and I would hope that we'd all support it. But I do have a question. Since we've removed the one recommendation to hire a full-time employee to kind of manage this or spearhead this through the city, then those that have been proponents of this up to this point, how, where do we go from here? Does your committee, does the committee continue to meet and work on this? Or is the proposal then to hire a consultant to do some of this? And is that more cost-effective than a full-time employee? So I mean, those are, even though I think those are some things we need to look at and would be nice to have an answer to fairly quickly, even if we can't get it tonight. But in many respects, I mean, I think most of us do want to see the, I think all of us want to see the city advance in the way of communication and broadband. But I think there are still some issues with the proposal, and in some respects, I still think it was premature.
Thank you, President Rennie, to answer that question. I believe in talking with the committee as well as meeting with Russ Elliott, who is the Wyoming Business Council's new director on broadband. The majority of these five recommendations are what are really considered and referred to as low-hanging fruit. They are things that have been done in other areas. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can gather information and data as far as what other right-of-way fees are. We actually have had that done. We have that study. So those are things that we can bring to you without having to hire additional employees in the short term. This is one piece of a very large issue, as was discussed by our wonderful young professional communities, in that we are growing to the Internet of Things, where it's very difficult to even purchase a refrigerator that doesn't talk to you on your phone and tell you that you've left it open in the middle of the night. And so with that, ideally, my big hope, and I think I've explained this to the committee, but I want to make it very publicly, Cheyenne is in the top running of 35 communities for an award, a million-dollar award. And in our proposal to Bloomberg, to Harvard, we propose that we hire a chief innovation and technology expert to take Cheyenne to that newest level because we believe it will take that. We'll know at the end of October if we have won that or not. And if we haven't, then what I plan on doing with staff is taking a look at our resources that we have, taking a look at the positions that we have, taking a look at our finances, and bringing forward to you as council a budget next year that actually includes at least one individual, if not, you know, a team and some other resources to take us forward into the future. But for right now, you're absolutely correct. We did not budget for it. We don't have the additional people. But for right now, these steps, it's going to take us months just to get these basics done. And I believe that you'll be seeing us come forward to you as far as how we then move forward to the next step with your approval.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Any other further comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a clarification on the amendment. The amendment this time, two parts. This is an adoption, not acknowledge receipt, correct? That's the way I heard it, that this is adopting. Is that correct? If the city clerk can read that back or if the sponsor of the amendment is?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the second part, basically, is technical. What you're basically asking is what we already receive in our background documentation for every item that comes before us, that you just want clarification that that's actually in writing on this, even though we would get it for every single item that comes before council anyways. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I think that's a bit presumptuous to think that every one of these recommendations, no matter what form they may materialize in, would automatically come in front of us. So I think it's important to expressly state that at the bottom, that regardless of what form these take, they will come in front of us.
Any other further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I made the motion. I think that was kind of what I understood, the folks that voted against. The initial amendment wanted to see, again, because I want this to move forward, but I can't support the amendment. And it goes back to really the overarching concern I have is, what I've heard tonight, is that adopt, the term "adopt," I worry that it's going to become meaningless. If we're going to adopt general concepts with no evidence or no data in front of us, I think it deteriorates the meaning of when this governing body moves to adopt something. So I'm very concerned about that practice, that precedent being set this evening. Since he was brought up, I'm going to read a quote from the email of the Business Council's broadband expert and what he sent to the council. And this was related to the first recommendation, the resolution, that I have the most consternation about, and that's building a publicly-owned open-access conduit network. He says, quote, "What you need to be very careful with is overbuilding already well-served areas as your initial build-out. You run the risk of alienating incumbents who are building in your area, and that can slow future developments in Cheyenne." I'm concerned that we've already alienated incumbents, as this expert says. We've thrown a lot of anecdotal evidence around, and I have yet to see a landscape survey of data in front of me that evidences what the access is right now, what the availability is, what the rates are, you know, what quality is. We don't have any of that information. So for this council to just jump forward and say, "Yep, we got to adopt, we got to build a publicly-owned open-access conduit," we haven't even had a conversation with whether, what the, where those needs are. What is the discrete area? And why is it that the private sector isn't servicing it? And could they if we did something else? We haven't had those discussions. So as my colleague said, from Ward Two, that this may be a little premature. I couldn't agree more, particularly on building a publicly-owned open-access conduit. And that's why I can't adopt.
Thank you. Is there other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. White.
Referencing the same email that was sent to us by Mr. Elliott, who is the subject matter expert hired as the broadband, full-time broadband person for the state of Wyoming. Bullet point number one, he says, "Building an open-access conduit in a discrete area is a good idea." Bullet point number two, "Dig-once is a must. Adopt ASAP." Bullet point number three, I'm not going to read because we all know that that's already underway. Bullet point number four, "Lower PROW, public right-of-way ASAP." And bullet point number five, "Citywide Wi-Fi network is a great idea." So if we are wanting data, if we are wanting subject matter experts to weigh in on the bullet points provided to us by the task force, which, as my colleague from Ward Three, Mr. Johnson stated, every single person, every single member of the task force other than myself and Mr. Rowland, who's an attorney, are members of the tech industry or tech field. So I believe the language from the email from Mr. Elliott, as well as the recommendations from the task force, do contain extensive subject matter expert analysis.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
I feel like I'm in a precarious situation when it says, "You run the risk of alienating incumbents." I've been at this for two and a half years, from when I first learned about what Longmont had done. And then basically, this was my marching orders from Ward Three constituents and people, like thousands of people that talked to me when they ran into me in the streets. Richard, as was stated even at the podium tonight, I've been with CenturyLink, I've been with Charter, I'm unhappy with services from both. Richard, if you can do anything to break up the monopolies, do it. And that's basically the voice of what I've heard across the community from, you know, multiple demographics, whether they be the north side, the south side, the east side, the west side, or people just coming in and doing business in the city that either they live in the county or in another state. So when it comes to alienating incumbents, I'm basically cut on a double-edged sword. The people that I represent say, "I'm getting terrible service. What are you going to do about it?" Whereas at the same time, I have experts like the Endow broadband initiative from the Wyoming Business Council saying, "Be careful who you alienate." So like I told the Charter representative, I was elected to represent the people of Cheyenne, and the people of Cheyenne have told me multiple times they're sick of it.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Layborn.
I have to admit, I'm confused. So we're voting on the amendment, correct?
Mr. Layborn, correct.
The sponsor of the amendment is confusing me. I'm curious as to whether he is for or against his amendment.
Mr. Shaner, could you clarify?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I made the amendment because I believe that reflects the sentiment of the five members of the governing body that disagreed with the First Amendment. However, I personally do not agree with adopting. So I don't support the amendment, or if the amendment passes, I don't support the resolution as amended.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? We are voting on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed are Mr. Shaner. That amendment passes. We are now back on the main motion. Any further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Shaner as a no.
Madam Mayor.
President Rennie.
I had a couple requests to take a brief recess.
Yes, please. Thank you. We will recess for, until 8:15.